...to our November 6th planning and zoning commission meeting. First item on the agenda is approving the October 2nd minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay.
I abstain, I think it wasn't there.
You don't have to.
I abstain.
All right. Motion passed unanimously. Into our regular agenda items. First item is an informal review for Jade Consulting for a South Section Village.
You can leave.
I'll introduce. So this is an informal review. This property is currently outside the city limits, so discussion was bringing this in as a PUD. Staff does not review these at this time, so while we've met, kind of offered some feedback. This presentation was submitted, and we'll turn this over to Trey and Jason.
And if there's any questions, we're here to help answer them.
Good evening. Trey, generate Jade Consulting. I have Jason Tickle here. I'm part of the development team. The screen this up is actually an old plan view. There should have been another. You guys may have seen another one that was slightly different.
I have a sec.
You want to pass those out?
I'll pass them out. I'll let you speak till you got them on. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jason Tickle. I live at 23389 Main Street. So I am proud to say that this is my 20th year in Fair Hope. Been here a long time, gotten to know most all of you, and raised kids here, and feel very proud of our community. I was approached by the landowner of this piece of property about three years ago, and we started a conversation about what the possibilities might be, what the goals would be. And through a long, slow process of getting to know each other, I was able to share my perspective after having gone through several master planning exercises with the city in those 20 years. And the plan that we have, that we're proposing for your consideration, is a little bit out of the box. And I have to applaud the land planning firm that came in and did an excellent job of listening to us, listening to the things we hope to accomplish, and really kind of surprised us in a lot of ways with the plan that they've come up with. When I started the conversation with them, I referenced the work of Ross Chapin, who's an architect out on the West Coast and an advocate for what he calls the pocket neighborhood design. And really, all that that means is, and this is very much in alignment with all of the planning goals I understand from the city, is a plan that really prioritizes the people that are going to live here as opposed to the cars that are going to live here. We are looking at a couple of different situations with regards to the land's current state. The Western Third is currently heavily wooded, and you'll see that we've done our best to try to preserve as much of the existing canopy as possible.
Is this facing south?
The drawing is correctly oriented that you're looking at. So north, the top, would be towards the city.
Got it.
So Section Street is down the left side.
Section Street's on the far left, and...
And Twin Beach is across the top.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
So a lot of the property is internal. It doesn't have a lot of frontage. There's a small piece on Section that is next to the old VFW Hall that is currently Ahi Tuna. And on the north side, catty corner to that northwest corner there is the Fair Hope Power Substation. To the east is Shell Brook Apartments. And then just beyond that is the gas station and the high school.
So it fronts on Twin Beach in Section?
On the north side, yes. The right two-thirds of the property is currently under cultivation, so it's a field. There is an existing drainage way that is shown sort of embellished here. It's my intention to work with Jade Consulting. I have the utmost confidence in their ability to help us with our sensitive approach to the property. Whether or not we'll be able to actually get these bodies of water, these lakes approved, we'll just have to see. There will be, I'm sure, extended processes to get some of that approved, but that is our hope. But if you look at what's proposed with the residential, starting with the Western side, and it's a theme that runs throughout, is to take clusters of roughly a dozen or so cottages at a time and have those clusters all front on a common green space. And then the rears of the property will be shared drive, driveways. The hope there is that not only will we be able to meet and/or exceed the green space requirements, but that the quality of the green space that we'll be able to deliver will be far superior to what is typical. Each of these cottages is designed so they'll have a front porch that addresses the green space. There'll be paths, walkways, that go along the fronts of each of these cottages. And then each of those paths tie back into a central green space corridor that will be amenitized for a project of this scale. And the idea is that while you may have a neighborhood which may have as many as 200 homes in it where you wouldn't know all of those people, you certainly would have the opportunity to get to know on a fairly intimate basis the folks that live directly adjacent to you. And the hope is to, you know, encourage community, encourage people knowing each other and developing the bonds that go along with that. The Central Park area, we have planned to amenitize with a pool, fitness, pickleball, that sort of thing, playgrounds. And in an effort to address another major concern that the city's grappling with, the size of these houses is conceived to be smaller than a lot of the current offerings. 1,200 to 1,800 square feet to try to address affordability issues. And the housing that we are studying right now is, we also have a diversity of product across this project, so it's not the same vanilla offering throughout. And the PowerPoint, which I will really just sort of fly through, focuses on two projects. One is a project that the architect I referenced earlier, Ross Chapin, has designed. And this just gives you a feel for that central green area and some of the residential typology that we're studying. And then the second product is from a community called Serenby, which is in Georgia. It's about an hour southwest of the Atlanta Airport. Very well-conceived houses, very thoughtful details, and, you know, something that I think would fit in with Fair Hope nicely. This is Chapin's project, Serenby. This photograph in particular, if you reference an area on the Western Third of the property, you'll see where we've got some brick pavers drawn in. It's conceived to, you know, give the impression of pedestrian-scale European village to add diversity and interest to what we anticipate will be supremely walkable neighborhood. Just show you a couple of ideas of the type of architecture that we're going to shoot for. So you can see the scale of this product and the detail is hopefully going to stand out in the current offerings in the market. The issue that jumped out to me in looking at this plan has to do with conveyance, and that is that lots of these cottages do not front on public roadways. The land planners laughed and referred me back to the founding story of Fair Hope and the whole idea of land ownership being something that can be conceived as belonging to the community as opposed to individuals. But the attorneys tell me the way that that will work is through some form of land condominium whereby the common areas will be owned collectively, and the individual lot owners will actually own units in the condominium, is how that's handled. I've got a significant amount invested to date, but, you know, it's my hope that the path that we're on is a project that the city will want us to annex and be proud of. I think that's sort of the overview, the sort of the main points I was hoping to say. And certainly, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
Commissioners, do you have any questions at this time?
Do you have an entrance on Section Street? Doesn't look like it in this, I can probably imagine.
There is. If you look, there is a bridge.
Yeah, I see that.
And then it actually will come out and will be directly across from the Hilltop neighborhood.
How many homes are you looking at putting in here?
241.
There are 241 on this drawing. I believe that is too many. We're looking to scale that back. In looking at neighborhoods in the area, I know that the colony is 3.6 units to the acre. And if you do the math, that would be 202 homes here, and I think that's a reasonable goal.
What roads were you talking about being private? Are you considering trying to gate the community?
No. No gate, but as a land condominium, I would imagine that all the roads would be private. Though we have had some conversation with staff about the primary spine road being turned over to the city.
I think that would be a good thing.
The bridge that you are thinking of on the Section Street side, just so you know, you've got to have two points of entry and egress from a subdivision this big with this many units, and both have to be able to accommodate fire apparatus. So that's going to be a substantial bridge if you do, or at least substantially constructed, just so you know.
And in conversation with Jade, I believe "bridge" may be a misnomer.
Okay.
A culvert system built, is probably the form it will take.
Okay. So a question then for Trey. On the web soils, I pulled up the web soils to look, and it's showing a blue line. Do you know if that is a state body? It doesn't show up on the FEMA map, so I'm assuming that's not a floodway. But do we know if that creek is a contributory to a state body?
This water, this drainage way flows through Lakewood to the golf course.
Okay.
So I think you guys probably have seen some recent changes in the Corps' determination of what is a waters of the US and what is not.
Right.
But the city does have some definitions on drainage ways.
Okay.
That we'll need to adhere to. The property to the west that we did, that was Jason's project, Hilltop, was not wetlands. But we did set up buffers in there to meet the subdivision regulations for those features. So to your point, we would model it to determine what a high water elevation would be during a thunderstorm, and then the drainage feature, more than likely, would probably be like a bottomless culvert. An arch.
Okay.
Did you just, sorry, I just turned on the wetlands layer as you were talking. It was like, whoa! So can you back, what did you say about wetlands? It looks like there's a lot.
If you're looking at the counties, yes, well, the whole county's wetlands.
Yeah.
So that is not a great source to review. That just tells you you need to go look. So we're looking.
Okay. You're delineating it now.
I was going to say, looking at the web soils, which is arch.
The delineation.
We've done a delineation on it, but the delineation was from, it's somewhat old based on what the recent Corps determination, the Supreme Court ruling was. So we want to get some clarification on that.
The two spots I saw on the web soils was there's a, where that stream is, there's a bunch of alluvials that go through there, which I guess technically aren't necessarily hydric. But there's also a big grady pond in that northeast corner right along Twin Beach Road.
Yes. So the proper answer to delineating what the Corps is trying to tell us as wetlands today is that we are in that process.
Okay.
Jason, I like this in principle and theory, and I like the connectivity of it, you know, on both roads and a lot of the layout. The one thing that I just noticed is when it comes into sort of the final deal is there are a lot of, some of the, a lot of buildings seem to be kind of right on the property line. And I don't know, maybe as you kind of, you know, look at the different meanderings of the roads and get a little bit more into the engineering, you know, I'm just looking kind of at the south area and kind of on the boot on the west area, there are a lot that just look like. And, I mean, they may be further off the property line than they look like. But, you know, I'd be kind of interested in sort of the buffering of that towards some of the neighboring properties. But, and might need to tweak the connectivity to the north and south just a little bit on that long strip. But overall, I like the way you're trying to, you know, work the communities where people get to know each other and the kind of the pocket areas, and then have, you know, the main areas too. And, you know, these, you know, IRs are a little bit, you know, the formal views are a little bit, you know, difficult for us because you don't want to say too much because until you see the staff report and the, you know, know what kind of, you know, the soils, whether that lake's going to be there, whether there's sand on the, you know, there might be just all white sand on that Twin Beach roadside there. I think that's a pretty sandy soil. There may be some clay. But until you see all of it and get the staff report, it's hard to go out too far on a limb. But overall, the principle and theory, it looks nice to me.
I've always liked the idea of neighborhoods laid out around commons. And we have friends who live in that kind of a neighborhood in Denmark, and I've seen them on the West Coast. And I think that, I mean, I'm sure you guys are already thinking this through, but the challenge is, you know, that people like their cars and garages here. And so how do you, how do you front the vibrant green and not, you know, you can just, I'd be curious if, you can treat the roads just like alleyways. They're just to service the cars, or you can make them a second front. And that seems kind of like the challenge. How do you treat that excess side? I can see either way. Some of these look broader, like they're real streets, and then some might be more like alleys. But that, I think that would be the challenge, making both sides nice. You know, making actual usable green space that they're fronting on, and then a decent, you know, because there were some beautiful pictures that you showed, but they weren't, I didn't see a garage. And that's the, garages are just, that's awful thing. We, you know, you got to, they're hard to make them nice. But the idea, there's so many parts of Fair Hope that do have a commons, that have a, that front on a gully. And over the years, so many people have talked about, should we, should the city put trails through there? How could we, so done right, that could be an example for, that might be emulated on public lands in other places. I am curious to see what y'all find out with the waterways because that's another, could be great. That seems like a big challenge.
And just to be clear, we did get an older copy. What you're seeing on those plans are much different from what was on the screen. Where they're clustered housing, the larger green space. And that, some of those were similar conversations we had. You know, what, on the clustered greens, you know, really how you engage, you know, front porches facing those. And I think the photos can exemplify that, that we'd want to see. The PUD would be the only way to accommodate this and kind of getting those architectural details there. Not picking paint colors or things like that, but how do we accommodate those things to make those spaces? What?
The relationship between green space and hills, yeah.
I think the layout that was on the PowerPoint is probably a good example of how the land planners have started off in the six to eight units in acre density, and now we're down to four and a half acre density. So, you know, the one that you're looking at now is a lot less than what this sheet is. And so he's even wanting to go a little bit lighter than that. And so this is something that's been going on for probably almost a year now. And so we just wanted to bring it to you, to kind of get your fever on it and see what you think. And if we're something that's in the right direction, or if there's something that's a red flag that we needed to really consider before we made a formal settlement, that would be the intent tonight, so.
I would love to see, and I don't know if I could, but it seems like it would be helpful if you submit for PUD to clearly characterize the types of green spaces. Like, these are forested commons that correspond with this in the zoning ordinance with, you know, woodland preserve, you know, and this is more of the European courtyard green space. I think that would be helpful.
I love the creativity. It's so nice to see something that's different and not the average. So kudos for thinking outside the box. It looks really interesting.
I'd like one, one question on feedback really from staff is one of the, one of the questions, that frontage that actually fronts Twin Beach currently and the plan in front of you, I think that shows as commercial, as proposed. And just from a, you know, we really don't have commercial there on Twin Beach until you get to the sitco. I mean, that could be something else. It could be, you know, another type of housing, you know, it could be green space, whatever it is. But is there any gut feeling, feedback on commercial being in that location?
I think that would be kind of, for them to propose to us with the restrictions they'd be kind of looking at, sort of like they did over across the street. I think there could be some really neat, you know, we get so hung up on commercial and residential being mixed here. Where when you go to Savannah or you go to Carmel, California, it's all mixed in and seems to work great together overall. Of course, I'm not on the city council of Carmel, so they may have people come they get complained to more than us P&amp;Z people after the fact. But, you know, depending on the, you know, obviously probably not a great place for a nightclub, but, you know, that's 260 houses, you know, residences right there, and then you've got the apartments right there. That's a, you know, a lot of density in that area. And one thing that, you know, we've been looking at with our, you know, village concept is, you know, what's good planning is having some commercial. I mean, there is a convenience store close by, but, you know, having some commercial where people don't have to get out on the roads and, you know, go every time that they go somewhere. I mean, I don't know. We'd have to look at staff rec, but a little deli or, and I'm just, this might be a stupid idea off the cuff, but a little deli or something like that, like some of the ones you see in Orange Beach or Seaside that people could kind of come into and all might, might be nice keeping people off the roads, you know, all the time.
So pedestrian connectivity, I'm just looking at the rooftops. I know that's like, this is pre-designed, they're just rooftop, commercial, parking lot. But the scale isn't nearly as interesting as the scale and proportion of everything else. And if there's any way to make it more reflective, so you had that indoor/outdoor experience at the restaurant or the cafe too, it seems like that would be, that would be more compatible with residential across the street possibly, you know, instead of the bigger commercial scale.
That makes sense. Absolutely. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just, you know, I appreciate the creativity of what you're, what you're doing here. You know, just, what bothers me or concerns me is, you know, when you look at this and you see all of these large, single home lots all around it and all this sort of open green space, and then sort of a drop of 240 homes in a pretty open area. And I see 240 new gas, water, power customers with what we're kind of going through right now with the growth that we're dealing with. And I, I mean, I just, you know, there's only so many 240 home subdivisions that we can add before it's a real, real problem. And not that this is not a good plan, but just the overall number is a concern for me based on what we've been dealing with on the council in the last couple of years at least.
And I'd like to add that it seems like a decent plan. It is a lot, considering the same thing that he just said. And the reason why the community act did zoning was because they did not want commercial on Twin Beach. They wanted to keep it out towards 98 because they wanted the same kind of a, you know, flow that we had with the houses. But I know this is going to eventually annex into the city limits, so it's not really going to matter. But just to throw that out there so that it's on the record because that's one of the reasons why we didn't want commercial on that strip of Twin Beach. We wanted it to stay residential. So just putting that out there.
And I appreciate that. It was not my first instinct to put commercial. We contemplated adding that at the request of the landowner because they had a vision and a goal of a place that the neighbors who didn't live in that proposed neighborhood but in the existing surrounding community could feel welcome to come in and participate as well.
Well, that would be part of your sales pitch of how does the commercial work? And does it make it more of a community or less of a community? And, you know, that would be part of, you know, when you come in with the official plan of selling that.
But also not to say that it allows for down the road that someone else says, well, they got commercial, we bought up a bunch of your land, can we do commercial also? And then it becomes commercial.
Sure.
And I think that that was more our concern, we're establishing a new expanding point.
And I think that, that was more our concern, we're establishing a, a new expanding point for the commercial. So I think it, it comes to the, the use. And I think.
I've got an idea, maybe connect a couple of people together that, see if something can work out. And let's, let's see.
Well, we've discussed over on the Publix, and, you know, how nice commercial could be if you could gate the, you know, like a little restaurant, cafe outdoor, if you could kind of connect the shopping center with the apartments, and then where the houses are about to start to be built, how much that could work as a bridge and tie everything together. But, you know, the developers is not interested in doing that there. But, anyway.
And I do, you know, Councilman, you have a very good point. And this is not the only project we're, we're seeing and having conversations of. Some, some large projects are still forthcoming. And I don't know how we get our heads around that, you know. Maybe, you know, one, just something that I'm thinking about, it may be that we actually look at construction schedules and kind of stretch those out so that each project gets a piece of the pie, you know, and, and we can, you know, let those projects grow as our systems grow to handle that. But it's something that I think we're, we're going to need to discuss more and more as, as we move forward. And just making sure we're keeping up with that growth reasonably and, and accommodate that in appropriate ways.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the second item in our agenda. UR 2314, a request of MediaCom for 4,800 linear feet of co, buried coaxial cable.
Thank you. Again, this is our utility review. So typically what we do here, for anyone in the audience, we show the area that it's being proposed. This is MediaCom on the left. You'll see where their director boring for new coaxial cable. And then red is overlapping with existing strands to mainly Parker Road, crossing Greeno into the PUD there, Parkstone. Thank you. We have our conditions here. There is a, a conversation Eric and I've had, and would probably like to propose a new condition. Eric, I'll kind of tee it up if you want to add anything. We require hang tags to be installed on doors before they start construction in these neighborhoods, so every homeowner knows it's coming. There is a phone number. We actually checked that somebody picks up that and calls that number, somebody can answer questions specifically about that, not get in a phone tree. Whether by design or accident, we've had an evolution where that's no longer working. A hang tag's being put on the door at 6:00 PM, and at 7:00 AM, there's crews out tearing up front yards. So would like to add a condition where that hang tag is, is in there at least seven days prior to the beginning of construction. So standard recommendations with one additional, I'm verbalizing, it's not on the slide, just in case we needed to discuss that or change it.
Thank you, sir. Is anybody here for MediaCom?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have anything you want to add to, to this?
My name's Brandon Johansson. Address is 1613 Nethayla Beach Road in Gulf Bridge, Florida. Just that, door tagging is something we require from our contractors. It probably isn't done by everybody every, every time, but it is something we require them to do. So I'm on board with it. The seven day thing shouldn't be a problem. If, if y'all want to instill that, that, that's fine with me.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. I'll go ahead and, if anybody has any questions before we stay up close. All right. This is not a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this? All right. Commissioners, any questions or concerns about this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve UR 23.14, subject to staff recommendations.
Including?
Including the added addition of tags, the door tags being placed one week prior to the start of construction.
I've got a motion to approve staff recommendation with the one addition, number 11, that the door tags will be hung at least seven days ahead. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. The next item on the agenda is once again MediaCom. And.
Okay. Same comments. The only difference here is the location. This is all coax, underground coax in the Overland subdivision on 48, kind of behind the Walmart, if you're familiar with that, and Blue Island. So same, same conditions. We would add, like to add 11, that there's a hang tags are installed seven days prior to construction, is what we recommend.
All right. All right. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for MediaCom or staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Quick question. You're, you are planning on boring both of these. The reason is, we have a lot of active permits in both Overland and Parkstone. I mean, they're, they're building a lot of houses all at the same time. So there is, I don't know that we have a lot of occupied houses in either one of them yet. So are, you're intending to bore?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Commissioners?
I move we approve UR 23.15, subject to staff recommendations and the added staff recommendation of placing door tags seven days prior to the start of construction.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I've got a motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations, as well as an 11th of hanging door tags at least seven days ahead. Do I, and have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Motion passing unanimously. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next is a public hearing to consider the request of the applicant Forrest Daniel and Associates on behalf of KWH Properties for a final plat for Polo Crossing, five unit multiple occupancy project.
Thank you. Okay. Some of you guys have already been to this place because it currently has the Chicken Salad Chick and Coastal Pharmacy. But Forrest Daniels, authorized agent, architect for the project, which is complete, the building is. Steve Fisher with Element III is the engineer. It's zone B2. It's approximately 1.77 acres. And like I said, you guys have probably been there. It is south of the Wolf Bayview Funeral Home. So that's what it looks like. That's not complete, obviously, on the right, but there's your building elevations. It does look like that. So this is the site plan. And as of today, the site plan has outdoor seating, which has yet to be installed, and also bike racks were not installed, even though that padding is there. More about those later. So there were five, and then there were more, announced back to five remaining requirements that have, that need to be done. And there, part of the one from the initial SD 2210 was to add a concrete sidewalk that has been installed, and it's that yellow highlight, highlighted area on this one that connects the outdoor picnic area to the front of the building. All utilities are provided and approved by Fairhope. There was a traffic study. Turn lane was required, and ALDOT has provisionally approved that. And ALDOT holds those maintenance bonds. Signage for the incidental drive-through and the for lease signs are both too large. And then there is a drainage easement in the northeast corner of the parcel, which is adjacent to the transformer pad, which has now been recorded. It was recorded last Thursday, and that's the instrument number. So the landscaping plan is incomplete. And to give you a little history, there were several heritage trees on the site. They were viewed by the Horticulture Supervisor and also a third party arborist back in the first round. The building was redesigned to save a 32-inch live oak tree near the entrance. And a 35-inch tree had to be removed due to poor health in the roundabout. There is a new tree planted in the roundabout. It doesn't look great, even though new growth has been spotted on it. But the city horticulturists have the opinion that the tree probably needs to be replaced. And we would like something in writing from the applicant stating they will do that. So the landscape plan that was provided was, has not been completed. And we've been going back and forth. And there's some correspondence with their landscape architect and our Horticulture Supervisor about finishing those things up. There is the landscape plan that was submitted. And this, you can kind of see it's been red marked by the Horticulture Supervisor. So those things are to, to be delivered and to be installed. There's the tree. It's kind of sad looking in the roundabout, but it does have some green on it. We were there, Hunter and I were again, we were there this morning, too. It did have some green, but to be determined. So they do have aggregate parking, which also looks kind of sad. So we've been asking them, what's the update on that? They had said they were going to put the O and M plan to stripe it, but is striping makes sense if it moves around. And you can see that that grade is, you know, it's up and it might pop a tire. So the site contractor is to install parking space markings in aggregate parking areas, and language is supposed to be added to the O and M regarding the annual inspection and restriping. And we're still working on that with them, too, because we've been corresponding with them all day today.
Isn't the Chicken Salad Chick open at this point?
Yeah.
It is.
So is Coastal, isn't it? The pharmacy, too, right? Not yet? Okay.
We're fine, we're doing the finals.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. So this was actually, when it got its certificate of occupancy, it was a temporary one. And that was in August, and it actually expires on Christmas this year.
Let me just clarify there. The MOP is for any three or more units. We've made the interpretation reserve, some others, Publix. If you're not hitting that third unit, we can operate under a TCO if we need to relook at that. I think MOPs overall, especially final approval, we need to kind of reconsider. When we, when we created the two-step process, there were some questions. We probably need to revisit that after seeing a few and what those closed-out procedures may be, but certainly not.
This sounds like reading between the lines, that there's not a lot of anxiousness on the side of the developer to check all of these boxes. And a lot of times when you've got a tenant waiting to move in and you wanted to get rid, you take care of these things a lot faster than this. I mean, I think there's a house in Fairhope, it's been living in for how many years without a permanent?
Yeah, there's, there's a few.
Of occupancy, you know, I'm just.
And, and that's why we're, we're putting, we typically don't put these in slides. You'll see our.
Yeah, you'll see our rationalization and conditions, yeah.
In a moment. And we expect these to be done by December 25th, before that TCO runs out. Permanent CO, as well as building permits for the other three units will be on hold until we get that done.
Yeah.
But what stick do we have if they don't? Like, what's their?
They have three empty units from here.
Yeah, they can't get building permits for those.
And they'd have to shut down on temporary CO, too.
Well, yeah, shut down Chicken Salad Chick.
If they don't have a permanent CO.
With, due to poor health, when did that big oak tree, I mean, because it was, it was slated to be saved, so the Horticulturists had looked at it and not said it was in poor health. At what point did it become in poor health?
That's a good question. I wasn't around for that. Do you know anything more about that?
Was it during construction?
It was, it was saved during the initial phases of construction. I wasn't involved in a lot of those meetings, but I know he was out there multiple times at the site. And that evolved from getting some arborists involved and kind of look, taking a deeper look into it.
I just, you know.
It's a big, it was a big tree.
It was a huge tree, and they designed around it. And, and yet the paving is like four feet from the base of the tree. I mean, I would get, it would certainly become, enter into a state of poor health if they trenched around the roots in the area that that paving is to put the, under.
This was done before all that work was started.
Okay.
So the evaluation of the tree was done prior to the paving, to, you know, the grading around that tree.
Okay.
So just, just so you know what.
Then that, that makes me feel better, but it's still, if, it was, even for their benefit, if they planned around a 35-inch oak, it'd be nice to at least have a live.
Yeah, a big one.
And it's sometimes hard when you're looking at that as a, as a, that one tree is part of a canopy for a site that's covered. Because remember, there's even larger oak tree.
Yeah, that's right there, that 35.
Was in poor health. Everybody knew it. So when, when things start getting cleared out, you know, you get a good evaluation of.
There's a lot larger replacements than what they put in, though, that you could put there.
Yes. That is, that is true. But it might, it might, it might have to be a larger one that goes back in there. We'll have to be, to be determined. Okay. So that just kind of summed up temporary, I mean, certificate of occupancy, and how the building permits may be withheld for future tenants if the below conditions are not satisfied by December 25th. And there's a typo, that's December 28th in that middle one. We forgot to change that one, but I should read December 25th, too. So.
Just to refresh my memory, like, we've always asked about, you know, why do a final, like, what's the acceptable amount of conditions to attach to a final plat? What are the pros and cons of doing this with the stick of they don't get the occupancy versus not approving it until they've switched out the signs and the tree?
It's a good question we talked about on Friday.
Certainly in your purview. I'll tell you where we kind of stand and where we have to fight. When it comes to landscape, if it's about a site that's unstable, we got runoff problems, we've got things like that. If you go out to the site, the site's stable, underneath the oak trees, there's a bed, clear bed created, and they don't have the monumental plants planted under there. And you'll see the plan, you saw the plan where those are at. You know, that, that was, we've moved that forward even in final plats and other things when it's, we're down the monumental plants. You know, bike rack, it's there. We were out there.
This morning.
Last, and Mike and I went out yesterday. You know, it's a small pavement there. There's a, you know, a truck parked there. If you don't know, it's a bike, you know, parking without the bike racks. So it's, it's certainly within your purview to hold it off.
The landscape, I don't see, on the recommendation conditions, I don't see anything about landscaping. You mentioned that the landscape's not.
When we were last.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so this is what it looked like today when things were coming in via email and whatnot. And it's the seizure inducing slide. So we had to, like I said, it went from four to five to six, back to five. So these, this is what we're dealing with now. So now we're six. So the signage is too big. They know it. They're allegedly working on it with the developer. And we've been corresponding with them all day today. The roundabout tree, it might not make it, and we need a written commitment from them to replace it if it doesn't make it. The aggregate parking, they communicated to us today, additional limestone will be added to the impervious parking area, and staff will approve prior to the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy.
Impervious parking area?
Yeah, that should be.
Is it supposed to be pervious?
Yeah. An updated O and M plan shall be provided with updated language regarding parking areas, inspections, and maintenance for that aggregate area. And landscape shall be installed as shown on approved landscape plans prior to issuance of the final CO. And then add the seating to the outdoor picnic area and the bike racks.
All right. All right. Thank you very much. Is anybody here on behalf of the applicant at this time? Yes, sir. Do you have anything you want to add to this?
I guess it's just several items that she addressed, wasn't aware of until, just saw that, I think, some of the correspondence you had with our civil engineer. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Michael Triplet with Forrest Daniel and Associates, 9769 Cambridge Road Drive in Daphne. Yeah, regarding the, let's see, regarding the incidental signage, Chicken Salad Chick is the one who provided that. They are, and they have been in contact with, and their signage company is providing new signage. And as soon as that's, or provided, it'll be installed. And yes, I, I went out there this morning also and took a look at the tree. There is a lot more new growth, but yes, we can provide written, written confirmation that if it does not survive, that we will replace.
Any questions for the applicant at this time? All right. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
The does not survive part of the tree, with the tree condition feels a little mushy to me. Like, it, it might survive until December and then not survive next summer. I mean, I would lean towards, I mean, just, it needs to be replaced. I don't, it seems hard to enforce.
Okay. You can, you can make, you can make a motion.
Okay. I, I move that we approve the final plat of case SD 23.28 Polo Crossing with staff recommendations with the, the change to number two. recommendations with the, the change to number two, just shorten staff recommendation number two, that the trial tree planted in the roundabout needs to be replaced. Period.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so I've got a motion to approve the staff recommendation with the, yes, sir, Chris.
Just, just for clarification on the condition two, I think you mentioned it should be pervious, not impervious, and condition three?
Correct, yes, I was going to that.
And that's part of your motion?
No, I was, I was gonna...
Thank you.
Well, I was gonna put down the motion, but tell me if this, with the staff recommendation subject to number two being changed to the tree and the circle will be replaced, and correction of the number three, the mis-type of impervious being changed to pervious. Good. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, next item, SD 23-29. This is a public hearing to consider the request of SC Civil for a final plat approval for Windmill Business Park.
Okay. Okay, SC, this is, yeah, on request of SC Civil on behalf of the Single Tax Windmill Holdings and Knockout Storage for final MOP approval. It's a four-unit project located at 9969 Windmill Road. It's owned by all those above entities. Larry Smith is here. It's zone to be four, and it's approximately 1.48 acres, and it's on the northwest corner of the intersection of State Highway 181 and Windmill Road. And the initial case for preliminary plat was SD 2132 in June of 2021. And it's complete. These were the conditions that were part of the preliminary plat, which have since been met. It was final landscape screening for parking area along Windmill Road. It was approved, and there might have been a required 10-foot buffer along adjacent residential zone property, but it got rezoned, so it nullified that. This is the site plan. There's the stats. This is taken last week. They're all complete. They're all occupied. I don't know if they're in business, but it looks like they are. There's the elevations and whatnot. So there are four buildings on site, two face Highway 181, and they are 3,022 square foot each, and the two others are 1,150 square feet each. There's a tension pond, and there is an O&amp;M plan that has been submitted with the final plat. Forty-two parking spots available on site, and it's located on the interior of the lot and is partially screened by landscaping. And there is a five-foot sidewalk along Windmill Road and Highway 181. And it did not require a traffic impact study. So staff does recommend approval of SD 2329 Windmill Professional Park.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff at this time? Larry, do you have anything to add at this time? All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? All right, in that case, I will turn the meeting over to the commissioners.
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendations of, which are complete, of SD 23.29.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Larry, the sidewalk looks great there. I like the way all that ties in and everything. Really looks good.
We appreciate the city, from side, from side walks down to actually...
Catch up to you. That's a well-used sidewalk, too, with the shade and everything.
It is. It's funny, I'll be looking out my window, and I'll see people like riding their bikes through the parking lot, because they'll get to the end, and they'll kind of back around. We clear the parking lot.
I'd be going right on through the parking lot to Billy's, and even a little more on the way back. But anyway, all right, I've got a motion and a second. All in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, item F, public hearing to consider the request of the applicant Duberry on behalf of D.R. Horton, Birmingham, for final plat for Laurel Brook Phase Two, 50-lot subdivision on the intersection of Highway 181 and County Road 24.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to excuse myself for this discussion.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mike Jeffries, City of Fairhope. This is Laurel Brook Phase Two. It's a 50-lot subdivision, located just on the east side of Laurel Brook Phase One that we just saw a few months ago. The did, that was approved, a 12-month extension was granted in January. On the left-handed screen zoning map, it's south of 181. We do not have zoning out there. Copy of the plat. One point of notice is you'll notice that Phase One did have the bulk of the amenities, the green space area, the landscape area that we went into detail during Phase One. Phase One was approved at September 7th meeting. That plat is currently being circulated for signatures. I believe it is at Baldwin County right now getting that signature before it comes over to Fairhope for final signature. The site is 90% vegetated. We do have invoices provided for the streetlights. Some follow-up activities is the copy of the recorded plat. That plat must be recorded within 120 days of the final approval. Submit a copy of the recorded O&amp;M agreement, and then the, provide the original maintenance and guarantee agreement executed by the developer, and the mayor will sign this to fully execute that. Staff recommends conditional approval of SD 23.30 Laurel Brook Phase Two final plat the following conditions: completion of those follow-up activities, and that the plat for Laurel Brook Phase One is recorded. Be happy to answer any questions you have for staff, and Duberry is with us tonight to answer questions on behalf of the applicant.
Any questions for staff at this time? Mike, all right. Who's Duberry? Do you have anything to add at this time?
No, sir. I think we've provided a couple of the follow-up items already. The recorded O&amp;M agreement has been provided to staff, so we're happy we went through all the hurdles in Phase One, and this one should be a lot smoother.
All right, thank you very much. Stay up front in case we have some questions, please. I mean, just at a chair or whatever, I just, any, any questions for the, for the developer at this time? All right, I'll go ahead and open the, open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to speak? All right, commissioners, close the public hearing.
I move we approve SD 23.30 Laurel Brook, Laurel Brook Phase Two, subject to staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
And good job, Mr. Jeffries.
Do you want to mention before you get out, just the timing on this for the binds? Okay, do you know?
Yes, sir.
Wrap those both in one, before we get to council?
And we don't know what the developer wants to do yet, but we will get that through.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, SD 23.31 Rockwell Place Final Plat is the last item on our agenda.
Okay, and Mike's going to present this. I do want to, there's a little bit of news ones here, and y'all are going to drive by, see some construction things. Typically, at this stage, everything will be wrapped up based on some permitting through ALDOT, some of the jurisdictional changes that happened with preliminary approvals and final approvals with us and the county. There is a separate agreement that is happening. Councilman, you'll get another look at this. It's, it's in draft form right now between the, the City Council of Fairhope, the Baldwin County Commission, and the, this developer, as well as the one to the south on the encounter development about the roadways and when that's finalized. So those portions that we would normally look at here and for final inspections would be handled by that agreement. Otherwise, it's pretty much a standard final plat. We've looked at the things we can, so what we were not able to will be part of the agreement, and we'll have another shot at reviewing that construction in the future, short, near, near future.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mike?
So it's a two-lot major subdivision located on the east side of Highway 181. The entrance is directly across from the Publix entrance. It's south of Harvest Green East subdivision, across from the waters, and is just north of the Encounter Development located at 104. Preliminary approval was approved at the February 7th Planning Commission meeting. On the left is the zoning map. On the right is an outdated aerial. You'll see an updated aerial and a future slide, copy of the plat and the site data in case we need to come back to that for reference. A copy of the landscape plan, some of the street trees, they have been planted. They are the sidewalk and street trees along 181. Those have not been planted at this time, and is part of that agreement that Hunter had mentioned will be included with that. This is a current image flight that we had for that. The work that you see being done is work that is permitted under the case SD 22.02, their multiple occupancy project. This will require a separate application similar to the two final MOPs that we have seen this evening to close out that project. So the site is 90% stabilized, except for what that permitted work is when they have their approved BMPs in place. There will be a future traffic light installed at the intersection across from the Publix Development. Also, a mixed-use trail will be installed parallel to Highway 181, and this image here is of that entrance directly across from the Publix Development. Some of the general comments, I'm not going to go through all of these. Hunter clarified a lot of these at the beginning of this. References, the proposed Lot One common areas, future right-of-way will be conditionally annexed into the city, and the city to accept the right-of-way, the separate agreement signifying that likewise. The performance bond be required for the completion of Bushel Drive, Rockwell Boulevard, and remaining infrastructure. The maintenance bond shall be required, some of all subdivisions. Staff is coordinating the multi-use path, path with the developer and the adjacent developers to try to create a uniform path that will extend from Highway 104 along north to Highway 181. And that work will be added to the performance bond. As I said, the site, other than the permitted work on the Rockwell MOP project, is 90% stabilized. Invoices have been provided for the streetlights. Follow-up activities for this is a copy of the recorded plat. Final plat must be recorded within 120 days after final approval. Note, the completion of the maintenance, the completion and maintenance agreement shall also be executed within that 120-day timeframe and provide a copy of the recorded O&amp;M agreement. Staff's recommendation is conditional approval of SD 23.31 Rockwell Place with the following conditions: condition number one is completion of those follow-up activities. Two, public infrastructure installed as part of this project requires final inspections pursuant to the completion and maintenance agreement. Punch list items known now or discovered in the future shall be resolved prior to acceptance. Nothing within this final plat approval shall be construed to mean the City of Fairhope has performed final inspections on infrastructure intended to be dedicated to the city. All governing bodies must approve the terms set forth in the completion and maintenance agreement related to the rights-of-way, public infrastructure in connection to Highway 181, including ALDOT in Baldwin County, and the completion and maintenance agreement must be executed by all parties to the agreement prior to the execution of the final plat for recording by the city and/or representative of the Planning Commission. Be happy to answer any questions you have on staff.
Any questions?
And we have, the engineer of record is with us tonight, Tim Lally, and the applicant, Mr. Mitchell.
Well, Mike gets his breath back. Any questions for staff at this time? All right, no questions for staff. Thank you, Mike. Do y'all have anything to add back there? All right, looks like there's nobody in here to talk about. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners? Any questions or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve SD 2331 Rockwell Place with the conditions as listed by staff.
All right, I have a motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
That's a run-on sentence.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second, to approve, subject to staff recommendations. Any further comments or questions?